I'd like to read this into the minutes for this meeting. City of Taft Planning Commission regular meeting agenda for Wednesday, November 4th, 2020. We're meeting in City Hall chambers at 209 East Kern Street, Taft, California 93268. Pursuant to the Governor's Executive Order N-29-20, Taft Planning Commission meetings will be held in the following manner. Effective November 4th, 2020, Planning Commission meetings will be providing seating for six attendees on a first come, first served basis. Attendees must wear masks in order to enter the building. Meetings will continue to be livestreamed and public comment can also still be received per the city's policy in response to the Governor's Executive Order N-29-20. Number one, in order to protect our constituents, city officials, and city staff, all public meetings until further notice will be held closed to the public. Planning Commission meetings will be livestreamed in real time to our YouTube channel by searching for City of Taft City Clerk on YouTube or at this link, H T T T, oh, just two Ts, P S colon forward slash forward slash W W W dot YouTube dot com forward slash user forward slash City of Taft. Item number two, public comments for Planning Commission meetings will be accepted in the following manner. Public comments will be accepted up until 3:00 PM the day of the meeting. Written comments may be dropped off in the Dropbox in front of City Hall. Comments may be emailed to the City Clerk at Y Mayfield at CityofTaft.org. Made by phone to the City Clerk's office at 661-763-1222. The comments received will be read into the record. Item three, should a member of the public prefer to speak during the live portion of the meetings, shall contact the City Clerk prior to the time listed above and provide a contact phone number. Be available during the meeting times, 4:00 PM to 5:00 PM. Will be contacted at the phone number provided and placed on speaker to address the commission during the meeting time. With that said, I am calling this meeting to order at approximately 4:03. Would you please rise for a pledge of allegiance?
Shannon, would you like to lead it?
Sure. Salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have a pastor present this evening? I'll do the invocation in that manner, in lieu of a pastor. Heavenly Father, we come before you to do the business of the City of Taft, and we ask for your wisdom and guidance in the proceedings that we are about to conduct. Give us your intellect and your mercy as we make these decisions. We ask you to watch over our country, our state, our city. Keep us citizens safe and let us do the will of the community and the interest of the community. We ask these things in Christ's name, amen.
Okay. Let's see.
Roll call.
Chairman Orrin.
Here.
Vice Chair Livingston.
Here.
Commissioner Banner.
Here.
Commissioner Lichen.
Here.
And Commissioner Miller.
Here.
Item number one, citizens' request, public comments. This is the time and the place for the general public to address the commission on matters within its jurisdiction. State law prohibits the commission from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. Commission may receive, comment, and set the matter for a subsequent meeting. Please limit comments to five minutes. Have anyone wishing to speak?
We have no public comments.
No public comments. All right. Item number two on the agenda is the minutes of the September 2nd, 2020 regular meeting and the October 7th, 2020 regular meeting. We need some direction on that because some of us were not present.
I missed the second meeting, so I know that they're going to just need to be taken separately, I think.
So we have to take them separately.
One common connection between the two meetings is that Commissioners Banner and Miller were at both. So I think the easy way is one would make the motion, the other make the second. And then a roll call and just mention which abstention to what meeting that you missed.
I'll make the motion then to approve both of the minutes. From September 2nd to and October 7th.
And I'll make a second.
It's been moved and seconded. We'll have a roll call vote on this.
Okay, Commissioner Lichen.
I believe I was absent on one of them, but yes.
You were absent on September 7th, right?
Yes.
Correct.
No, other way around.
Other way around?
Livingston and Lichen were absent on the 7th.
Yeah, I was here for the September meeting and missed the October one, right.
Okay, Commissioner Miller?
Yes, to both.
Commissioner Banner?
Yes.
Vice Chair Livingston?
Yes, on September, and I'm abstaining on the October.
And Chairman Orrin?
Yes, to October 7th, and I believe I have to abstain on the 2nd of September. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so then you have correct notes and it's approved?
Yes.
All right, thank you. All right, item number three is a public hearing, a conditional use permit number 22, no, excuse me, 2020-13. We have a recommendation from our planner. Mr. Staples?
Yes, thank you, Chairman Orrin. The project before you, as you mentioned, conditional use permit number 2020-13. It's a proposal by the applicant, Jose Arroyo, to establish a new small collection recycling facility on the southern portion of a 3.7 acre lot within the General Commercial Zone District near 1015 Fourth Street. The project is located at the southeast corner of a fully developed property known as the Pilot Plaza Shopping Center, bound by Fourth and Sixth Streets and Finley Drive. The existing surrounding land uses include retail and restaurant uses in the Pilot Plaza Shopping Center to the north, east, and west. Residential and office uses further on the east side of Fourth Street and the Taft City School District property to the south. The proposed recycling center has existing driveway access along Fourth Street. Per Section 6-12-22, Section D, recycling facilities of the Taft Municipal Code, it provides regulations for small collection recycling facilities. They may be no larger than 500 square feet in area, occupy no more than five parking spaces, and be set back at least 10 feet from any property line. Further, these facilities shall be kept, shall accept only glass, metals, plastic containers, papers, and reusable items that the state allows. Recyclable material containers shall be constructed to maintain the durable waterproof and waterproof material, covered when the facility is not in use and secured from unauthorized entry. The applicant is proposing a small collection recycling facility consistent with the provisions in that section. The facility is located on an asphalt paved area in the southeast corner of the Pilot Plaza, as I mentioned, at the rear of the existing buildings, but does not occupy any parking spaces. The facility will cover a fenced area of 25 feet by 25 feet, with two eight foot by 20 foot storage containers. The chain link fencing will have full width slats to screen the facility area when closed and not in use. The facility operating hours will be 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM, Monday through Saturday, and closed on Sundays. The facility will only accept the allowed aluminum, plastic, and glass containers. The facility will be set back more than 10 feet from the existing buildings and 64 feet from the southern property line, which separates the shopping center from the school district. But it also maintains a clear path of vehicle travel east-west on that south side of the shopping center. The applicant submitted the site, or the conditional use permit application on September 17th of 2020. An incomplete letter was issued on October 7th requesting a more detailed site plan, which all of you should have a full-size copy of, and other revisions to show compliance with Section 6-12-22, Section D. The applicant submitted revised plans on October 21st. As the project meant to prescribe development standards of the general commercial zone, the project was moved on to Planning Commission for review and approval. And just to be specific on the CEQA determination, it kind of reads weird, 15303 of the CEQA guidelines refers to new construction or conversion of small structures. But there's a subsection in it regarding any commercial activity expanding more than 2,500 square feet on what's existing. As long as you're under that, it qualifies for the exemption, so that's being applied for this project. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions you may have. Mr. Arroyo is here, available for any questions. He's mostly Spanish speaker, so we do have our staff member, Raya Rodriguez, to help translate. She'll understand most of everything but the help in the conversation. She'll assist all of us as we move forward on this. So that concludes my presentation.
Okay, thank you, Mark.
I have a question.
Yes.
Is this the site where there was a recycling facility before?
It's generally in the similar area. This is the plan that all of you have. I have an aerial photo that's in your staff report that might show it a little better. So you have the shopping center. I just put this red box in the general location where the prior one is as well, and that's in the discussion we had before Mr. Arroyo submitted. He was aware of that location, and I mentioned that's one area that possibly a facility like this could go. So it's behind Goodwill and the Fogatas Restaurant and kind of to the side of the Hacienda Grove.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Arroyo, would you like to address the commission?
Okay, my name is Jose Arroyo. I don't want to say anything, I just want to thank you all for your time and for giving me this opportunity to express my business that I want to open.
My name is Jose Arroyo, and I want to give you guys thanks for taking the time and to considering my business in this proposition. I'm available for any questions you may have.
The members of the Planning Commission have questions for Mr. Arroyo?
I do. Sir, have you, have you looked at other possible locations for the business here in Taft?
Not here in Taft.
I appreciate the business wanting to, wanting to open there. I think it is necessary, but I'm just a little weary of the, of the location being so close to a restaurant.
Well, we have several businesses in Bakersfield, California. We have six, in which we are close to restaurants, places of wine shops, and for more than 10 years, and until now we've had no problems because we always keep, we always worry about keeping clean.
He says that he's had more than 15 years in this business. He owns six other businesses in Bakersfield. All businesses are located within restaurant reach, liquor store reach, and he says he's never had a problem in any, any single one of his businesses. Their main priority is to always maintain the area clean and pick up any trash or debris that they may have.
Thank you.
Just one thing along that. The photo you have in your packet is one of the locations that Mr. Arroyo operates. So this isn't just a general photo of one, this is one that he operates. So fencing would be similar and things like that.
I have a question. How, after you collect, what you collect, how soon are you dumping what you collect? How often is that happening?
Every day, I collect aluminum and everything, how often do they go? We buy every day, and practically we plan to send it, we take it every day to deliver it tomorrow morning to start a new day. That's what we do every day.
So with all of his locations, they purchase aluminum in all recyclables every day, and at the end of day, they take their, take it with them to Bakersfield to have it ready to ship the next day and to have a clean slate in the morning.
Very good.
Other questions? Shannon? Sure, you already said Tom. Okay. I'd like to know where that facility is. Exact location.
Stella Olday in...
Yeah, it's in Olday, the thing, what you have.
It didn't say where in Olday, it was just Olday.
The shop is called Food Sport, it's located on 810 Oil Drive, Bakersfield, California.
It's located on 810 Oil Drive in Bakersfield, California.
Okay. Thank you. I have no further questions. However, I have been asked to read a public comment into the record.
Chairman Orrin, open the public hearing because that would be considered part of the public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Arroyo. We may call you back for additional questions. Okay, the public meeting is declared open. I have a letter from citizens in proximity to the property. This letter is dated October 31st of 2020. It's regarding conditional use permit number 2020-13. To the Planning Commission of the City of Taft, we are writing this letter in opposition to prevent number 2020-13. While we are not, while we do not oppose a recycling facility in Taft, we do, however, oppose the placement of Jose Arroyo, the placement Jose Arroyo is requesting to open his facility. Our current residence is close by the Pilot Plaza. In recent years, there was a facility in this location which brought trash and debris that would end up not only in our residential streets, but in our front yards as well. We also encountered unwanted pilfering through the trash bins, leaving more debris in our alleys. As you know, our local middle school and junior high school are located next to the proposed facility. We are concerned for our children who attend such schools. As with previous experience with a facility so close, we found on several occasions drug paraphernalia within the above-mentioned debris. We request that you take our concerns into effect when making your decisions regarding this proposed permit. And it's signed by Jeff Howard, 327 Pine Drive, Taft, Vicky Howard, 327 Pine Drive, Taft, and Ed Gaither, 904 Fourth Street, Taft. Any other comments?
I'll be translating in Spanish.
We have the Spanish translation of the letter that I will read.
Okay, thank you.
He says he's not sure how the previous business was ran, but he says he wants to take advantage of being a new business in town to set these rules. And their main priority is to always maintain clean, maintain the facility, the area clean, so that no debris ever gets to people's yards or anything like that.
All right, thank you. This time I close the public hearing. Comments from the commissioners?
I think as far as to address what the letter was in reference to, and obviously this is a new business, which we want to pride ourselves as being pro-business. I feel like we've done a pretty good job as a city. However, it's not just about the actual business itself, as to how they maintain their operations. It comes to, and I think this is maybe where it echoes what the letter was, is that it comes to others and what it potentially could bring in that, in that particular location, given the fact that it is very close to restaurants as well as the residential itself. I believe that it's very important for us to have recycling facilities in town. There's a great need for it, and I think that it's a great thing to be able to have an additional location, especially on another side, another part of our, of our town. I don't know that I necessarily agree with the particular location that it is at this exact time. I, I think it's great for it to be maybe in an industrial area and that if we were, you know, to encourage Jose to be able to find a location that may be able to fit what, what would be a suitable location and not disturb the residential areas, that would be something that would be more amenable to, to approve.
Thank you. Others?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure this is exactly the same setup as the previous site there. The site previously was open.
Correct.
Out away from the wall a little bit more, it looks like to me from looking at this. This one appears to me to be properly fenced. I'm assuming, I was looking just to check, you know, we have our usual requirements regarding health and safety. It seemed to me that as long as it was kept clean, the, the site is actually better protected and better set up than the previous one was. As far as people going through the trash, they still go through my trash. So I don't know that that's a, a problem created by this particular business. They're still going through it now and hauling it all to Bakersfield, however they get there. So I'm, I'm not as concerned about the, the problem with, with that, to be honest with you. And I ride my bike through there quite frequently, and I still see homeless people. I still see some of the other issues. I don't know that this would increase it significantly, to be honest with you.
Excuse me?
Have you looked elsewhere for another site to, to do this at all?
And his requisites? Exactly. So he said he did consider other spots in, within city limits, but this is the spot where he was told that there was a previous recycling facility, which led him more to this spot than any other. He says that his intentions are to put a, put a fence around to hide the container that's going to be there and as well as to keep everything locked so that nobody's breaking in and out of sight and things like that. He said that he is planning on, well, like his other businesses, he does have requirements when purchasing any recyclables, as in you must provide an ID, you must, they have to write down your license plate number. So people who show up with shopping carts or strollers or anything like that, they're not allowed to purchase from them because they do get audited by the state where they require that paperwork, as well as they need to verify that the person that they purchased the cans from are from California, not from any other state. So it's some of the things that he instills in his other businesses, and he hopes that will minimize any problems with any residential neighbors or with the homelessness in town.
Okay. Is that satisfactory answer?
Right, I got my answer, yes.
Bob, you have comments?
No, nothing further.
I do. About six months ago, we asked that we address this issue and that we take the recycling completely out of the residential area. We requested that a recycling facility be placed in an industrial area only, M1 zoning, and we requested that they be no closer than one half mile to any residence. We haven't acted on that, but that's a proposal from this commission that we want to see the city council address. So I am of the opinion, there are many other places our community can use the service, but I am not in favor of putting it in the vicinity of a residence any closer than one half mile. So one half mile from... So one-half mile from any residence is my opinion.
Dice él que hace seis meses en esta misma junta, este, sugestionó que estos tipos de negocios de reciclaje que solamente estuvieran localizados en áreas industriales. Esa área donde usted quiere poner su, ah, su negocio viene siendo una área residencial. Dice él que no es algo que ha pasado todavía, este, pero que esos tipos de negocios, lo que está adquiriendo ellos, es que no estén cerca, ah, menos de medio milla de las casas residenciales. Entonces dice él que sí, ah, que es algo que ellos planean en, en cambiar una regla, poner ellos, y pues dice él que no está de acuerdo en el, en la locación que ha escogido, pero que en cualquier otra área donde sea industrial para estos tipos de negocios que, que sí estaría de acuerdo con eso.
Bueno, no sé, por el momento, no sé si me puedan aprobar esta aplicación, porque me ya he trabajado mucho en ello, pero yo también he estado planeado en comprar un terreno afuera de la ciudad para poner mi negocio, si también la ciudad lo permite, o dependiendo el condado también que lo permita. Quiero, la opinión sí es aprobado comprar un, un local y yo poner mi propio negocio ahí.
He said that in the meantime, he still has the hopes of possibly o- opening his business and if the, if anything should pass where this type of business isn't allowed, um, within half a mile of any residential home, that he does plan on buying an, a lot to open his business elsewhere. Uh, but in the meantime, he says that he had his heart set on this area where there has been a previous business like this before.
I, I'm aware of that previous business as, and was opposed to it being there at the time during its duration. I am not concerned about, um, his clientele, whoever they are that recycles is not my concern. My concern is, is that the overall appearance of that type of business does not belong in a commercial area in a shopping center. I disagree with it in Bakersfield and Oildale and all the other communities that do it. It should be placed in an industrial area because that's a really more of a manufacturing process, and that's what most other cities do with these kinds of things, but they've gotten, um, carried away with allowing them at a time. And most of them, according to Mr. Staples, we've had two-hundred-and-seventy-six of them close in Kern County in the past year.
Statewide.
Statewide. I'm, uh, I, I don't mind the business plan. I'm opposed to the location. I believe strongly that it belongs in an industrial area. So that's an M zoning. There's many vacant parcels, um, over by the police, behind Kmart. Um, there are parcels of land that are not being fully used in that area, and I think that maybe, my opinion is that I would like to see Mr. Arroyo attempt to locate the business over there. I am opposed to this location.
Dice él que está de acuerdo con el negocio, nomás lo único que no le gusta es la locación. Él dice que él siente que este tipo de negocio debe de estar en un lugar, ah, para negocios industriales. Dice él que, ah, que no nomás es aquí en Taft que él está puesto eso, que también en Bakersfield que permiten estos tipos de negocios, que estén cerca de los, de las casas residenciales. Dice él que él quisiera que buscara, que usted buscara otras opciones en otras locaciones. Dice él que en la área detrás de la Kmart hay muchos, ah, muchos lotes, este, ah, puros lotes, y que pues él quisiera que usted investigara en otros lugares antes de ese lugar, ah, porque él, él de veras siente que estos tipos de negocios no deben estar en una área residencial.
Bueno, la, eh, la opinión que está dando está bien, una, por una parte, pero a nosotros, el, por ejemplo, Sacramento nos pide que el negocio esté cerca de los lugares donde se venda CRV para que eso no sea aprobado, porque si no hay lugares que esté, se venda CRV en, en ese lugar, no, 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 no se lo puede aprobar.
En Sacramento es la oficina.
Es, es donde nos autorizan y nos dan la licencia y el permiso para tener nuestro negocio. Tiene que haber lugares que se venda CRV, por eso es, es un lugar de, de reciclaje.
No sabe como cuántos pies cerca.
Eh, no, pero prácticamente tiene que estar, tiene que estar pegado a una tienda que se venda CRV o cerca de una tienda que se venda CRV. Y esos son los áreas donde pues hay casas y la gente va a comprar.
So he says that in Sacramento, where he gets his license to be able to, um, to run a business like this, that they do require that this business be close to a store where they do sell CRV. It is one of the requirements, which is why he thought this area was the best choice because, um, Save More is right there, they do sell CRV. But he said it is one of the, um, uh, one of the conditions in having this license to be able to, um, to have one of this, to have this type of business.
Okay, I understand that.
Well, what about, what about our other, uh, recycling facility?
It's dead.
Is it gone?
Well, they're out in the industrial areas, so that does allow them to, um, I think they're, they just received, but in that area you're able to be the larger facility, which allows more, um, processing, um, and, but I'm not sure of the status of their current, uh, business license.
So they wouldn't have the same restriction that he has?
It is, but the industrial zone, like I said, allows more, it's, uh, that's why the small collection facility is capitalized. Uh, the small are these under five-hundred-square-foot, um, back of shopping centers, somewhere out in the parking lots of shopping centers, as you mentioned, like in Bakersfield. And then there's the large ones that are over five-hundred-square-feet, need to be in industrial, cause it does allow some of the, uh, crushing, compacting into the bricks and things like that, accepting cardboard if, uh, um, they choose to do so, things like that. So that's, uh, some of the differentiation, uh, between the two areas. That they wouldn't be able to do all that extra stuff, obviously, in a commercial area.
So, I, I have a question. Um, as far as the, what was the reasoning that the other, uh, collection site is no longer a collection site?
I'm not sure what closed the prior business that was here, uh, but what Chairman Orrin was referring to was that larger business called Replanet. Uh, I believe some of the returns from the state were being lessened, was the rumor in news reports, and that's why they closed their two-hundred-some-odd locations statewide. But now we have, uh, the, the smaller dependent, um, groups that have two to five locations. Um, like if you look on the list, there's a fifty-some-odd countywide in Kern County, obviously bolster in, uh, Bakersfield.
Well, but my question on that is, wasn't the one that was there before this that closed, um, part of J&amp;D Recycling, that then they were able to take it to their own facility to process, which is maybe why it was allowed?
I did, uh, well, I don't know if that was the reason for the initial allowance there. I did see their old business license for this location, but it indicated it was, uh, ended in two thousand and four, and that might have been when they moved out. So I'm not sure who is the current ten, or the most recent tenant in that location. I, I did try to look it up quickly, but I didn't see, uh, a reference to the most recent one that closed four, five years ago.
Do you have a, any information for us on the state criteria, that it be?
I did not.
Adjacent or in proximity to a place where the recyclables are initially sold?
I have not looked at the state law or the licensing requirement side, which is, uh, making, uh, all these locations certified, excepters of CRV, the technical acronym for, um, what this is. Uh, so I'm not aware of, uh, the requirement or the preference or to what level they, um, ask for that kind of proximity for the location. What I do know is there is a, um, I forgot what the term is, but there is, you call it a recycling island, where a small town like a Taft or Arvin or wherever it may be, if they don't have a facility like this or J&amp;D, uh, the grocery stores are required to accept CRV, so you don't have to drive all the way to Bakersfield or other parts of the state to, uh, handle your recycling. So I know of that provision.
I bet they love it.
Well, it'd be.
Well, I'm not sure how they handle it.
It'd be essentially like the same location behind the grocery store.
Yeah.
It adds, it adds responsibility to the grocery store operator to store that, and they have huge problems, my experience in, with the grocery people, huge problems with pest infestation in the recyclables that are stored until they get recycled. I understand that Mr. Arroyo, uh, intends to recycle continuously, that's a daily basis. I get that. Nonetheless, I'm still opposed to it. It belongs not where, proximity is proximity. Um, I don't want one next to the Seven-Eleven. I don't think the Seven-Eleven wants one next to mine. The grocery store I know doesn't want, I've spoken to the manager. These, these types of facilities serve a purpose, but that purpose can be best fulfilled in my mind, in an industrial area. And as I said, there's plenty of locations that way, there's plenty of locations out, Highway thirty-three, but this location is far too close to the residences.
Dice él que, que es algo necesario que ocupamos aquí en Taft, pero que él está, no está de acuerdo con la locación del, del negocio. Dice él que hay muchos terrenos que puede, podría investigar usted si estarían disponibles para rentables o para, para comprarlo, para poder abrir su negocio ahí. Este, pero es algo que dice, está muy cerca de las casas residenciales.
Bueno, pues prácticamente, pues es los que nos piden a nosotros, ah, el, para darnos el permiso, que pues la gente vayan y reciclen lo más cercano de su, de su área, para que no estén tirando la basura y estén llevando toda la basura a un lado. Por eso es que prácticamente buscamos en el centro de las áreas residenciales, que son los que van a reciclar, a llevar el material a, a reciclar.
Um, he says that, um, typically the other businesses that he owns, he finds, when he opened those businesses, he opened them in places where there are commercial and residential, where it's easy access, anybody can swing by and cash any, um, any, uh, recyclables that they may have, and it's, it's more, um, it's more business and as well as a requirement that they have to be located within a certain, um, area of, of a, of a store that sells CRV.
Okay. I can appreciate that, thank you.
So Chairman Orrin, uh, since there's been some questions about location, uh, you could have some options with your motion. Um, you could proceed with what's recommended on the staff report, um, but since location seems to be a question mark, from what I'm hearing from the public commentants and commissioners, uh, you can, uh, work with the applicant and possibly tabling, so he may look for another location, um, and then come back when he has one in an area that if there's a consensus among the five of you for, um, non-commercial zones, not so close to a neighborhood type of thing. Uh, that's, there, you have that option, you're not bound by the recommendation that's on the staff report.
Doesn't have to be a yes or a no, it can be.
Right, but that is the other option as well. If someone wants to approve it, they can. Um, if you go down the road of another decision, it would still be a motion on the, um, the given resolution, and then you vote on that. Uh, but, uh, tabling and encouraging, uh, looking for another location within the city limits is also an option you have.
It has to be in the city limits?
No, it's just if, uh, if.
Continue with us, yeah.
To continue with us, if, uh, it was a option like Chairman Orrin mentioned, um, over on Commerce or Enterprise out by the police station, or if it's, uh, some on the west side of town near GPS or some where J&amp;D's at, um, those general locations, but then if it is north of Ash or, uh, south of Oak, that gets into the county, and you would be working with the county for a location like that. But, um, I'm just bringing up the option that you're not bound by the, the one that's recommended. You can, uh, have a discussion with them about if he wants to look for another location that would be more amenable to the five of you and to the public comments we receive from the neighbors, that's an option.
There's a couple of things I'd like to know. Um, is J&amp;D back and open again?
I didn't investigate that, I just worked with Mr. Arroyo.
Remember, they're a large-scale recycling facility. Um, but, so I suspect that might be different in taking the CRV material, cause they're definitely not within range of, as far as I know, of any store that does that. What I would really like to know is if that's an actual requirement, then we're gonna be stuck with some problems, because I don't think any of our industrial goes anywhere within the, the distance that would be required. Um, if there really is a requirement that they have to the site near, what's the distance? Otherwise, all of our industrial is pretty much away from that kind of thing, which is why it's away from all of that.
Right.
So we may be stuck with an issue of, yeah, we'd like to have it out there, but the state law doesn't put, give us permission to do that.
Well, and I, I, I think that you're on the right track as far as that goes, because it definitely makes sense that if it has to be within a certain area, because you buy it here, you recycle it here, and this is just a collection facility. Um, however, I still think the location with the proximity next to the school and the residential in this particular location is an issue. So even if it doesn't necessarily as far as a full, this isn't a full-blown recycling facility like we're talking about with what we have out on J&amp;D, but with this being a smaller five-hundred-square-foot recycling, that, that may be part of the requirement if we're able to figure that out, and if so, that might change his available options, um, where there may be some that are closer in town, but still are not directly across the street from a residential area right there on, on that road.
And that's the other question I was curious about, was what kind of complaints if we have on record that J&amp;D got for recycling facility in that same location before they shut it, did they shut it down because of complaints, or did they just shut it down because they didn't wanna operate a second site, it was just as easy to have everybody come out? I mean, how far is it from one to the other for J&amp;D really?
Yeah, and I think those are informational things that we probably need to know before we're able to make a decision on the exact location anyway.
I, I think what, what we need to do is address is, is this gonna be a yes/no and put it to a vote, or shall we give instruction to Mr. Arroyo to seek another location? I don't think any of us here are opposed to the concept.
No, not at all.
But I, I'm adamantly opposed to the location. So there, and there are a lot of locations around here that would fit the bill, easy travel to and from, but not nearer residents.
I, I think I'd like to say continue it, so we can get the other information, but continue it to a time, not next month necessarily, but a time when Mr. Arroyo is able to come back either with a new site, or we know that, that any other site in our industrial might not work. Cause I don't know how long that's gonna take. Um, you know, I'm, I'm concerned that we know enough, we don't know enough information today to make a, a decision that may affect not just this, but if somebody else wants to do that. I'd like to know that information before we make any kind of real decision.
All right, so I'm looking for a motion.
Well, I'm just guessing, what's the best way to do a continue it? Would you?
It, that would be the motion is motion to continue this item to a future date, requesting, uh, it sounds like either giving Mr. Arroyo an, uh, opportunity to find another location. And then with that, I'll do my side of, uh, getting that information on the state level, um, that, uh, the operators of these facilities, if they are required and what that distance is, and, uh, get you some specifics on that. What I do know, our, uh, specific recycling facility section of the code doesn't make those kind of, uh, uh, specific requirements or claims. Uh, it's more about the operation, uh, so.
Well, and definitely a collection is different than a processing, but that doesn't necessarily mean that a collection should still be directly across the street from a neighborhood.
Well, and I, I think that one's an issue that, I think, true. We, so my motion would be to continue this item to a future date, to allow Mr. Arroyo first, uh, among the items to, uh, look for another site that might be more appropriate. Um, I think the, the nearness to the school is probably the biggest issue that, that I, I've heard from people about. I would also like to have the information regarding the CRV requirements. I would like to know if we have any records of complaints and other issues related to the previous site. Um, and, and I don't know if there's any other questions people have they wanna add to that. Um, so that's my motion then.
I'll second that motion.
Can you, 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 can
Commissioner Miller?
I, I'd like to table this motion for a minute.
Okay.
Mr. Epperson, do you have input for us?
Uh, is there a specific question, Mr. Chairman? The input I would have is that normally, you've asked for a lot of information coming back, and a normal procedure, I'm gonna say, Mr. Parker, normal procedure would be to vote this matter up or down, and then perhaps give direction, assuming it's not voted up, to bring back on another occasion with, uh, an alternate proposal. If there's a concern about, about applying for another fee, that, uh, city council can always be asked to waive that, or, uh, might be able, even be able to do that administratively, I don't know. That'd be a norm, a more normal procedure, but the planning commission, uh, there is a, a motion on the, on the floor, so the planning commission can proceed with that if it wishes.
So moved in second, and we're calling for a vote then.
Commissioner Laitman?
Yeah, that's where I'm at, question still. So are we tabling this until...
I think what Mr. Epperson just said is we need to vote it up or down.
So that's not the vo- no, 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 that's not what he said.
And, yeah, but if we vote it down, we can ask Mr. Arroyo to do further investigation and come back to us.
No, we have to vote this motion that's on the agenda.
You have to vote on the motion that's on the floor, it's been made, seconded. So if you wanted to do something different, you would need to vote my motion down.
That's correct. This motion, uh, this motion needs to be voted on regardless.
Correct.
Yes.
Because it was made and it was seconded.
Okay.
Um, if it's, if it's passed, then it appears, if I understood the motion correctly, it's continue, is going to be continued to a, a date in the future with more information coming back. If it's not passed, then any motion that includes the planning commission can be made regarding the same item.
With, with more information including an alternate site?
Correct.
That's...
Could you read the motion back, Darnell? Could you read the motion back to us?
Motion by living six seconds by Banner. Oh, um, what you guys were...
What did I say?
Oh, okay, table, to table, um, table the item for the applicant to look for a new location within the city limit.
No, that's not, that's not the full motion. So let me try, I mean, what I said was, continue to a future date, and that I wanted our staff to, um, research the information required for the CRV.
The state information.
State information on the CRV, and encourage Mr. Arroyo to use that time to look for another Mostly what I wanna know about is the CRV, also and about, um, previous complaints regarding that location.
I'm going to ask you to read that back, so we're certain that Mrs. Banner wants to make this second.
To continue to a future date and for stop to, um, for stop to, uh, research the CRV requirements, and you're encouraging Mr. Arroyo, uh, can't read my writing now, uh, uh, encouraging Mr. Arroyo to look for another location.
During that time, yes.
Oh, and also to, uh, look, to research any previous complaints from the other facility.
You could read second that motion, Mr. Banner.
Yes. I didn't know.
Okay, now it's the roll call vote.
Commissioner Laitman?
I think I've got that, I'll go with yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Banner?
Yes.
Vice Charlie Lees?
Yes.
And Chairman Orrin?
No.
That carries on A four one. Okay, thank you, Mr. Arroyo, uh...
So we'll work on this, we'll get the information requested, uh, we'll work with Mr. Arroyo for, um, looking towards an industrial side, which we brought up during the discussion, and then we'll come back at a future meeting.
Okay.
We, we don't oppose the business, sir, we're just looking for an alternate location.
Que no están a punto de negocio nomás, quieren que se pongan, entonces no le aprobaron y denegaron la aplicación, lo que es que se esperan, se esperan que cambiaron la cinta para otra fecha en el futuro, y en ese tiempo el director va a buscar, este, información sobre la reglas del estado, sobre el CRV, para ver qué requisitos ocupan ellos, porque si es algo donde tiene que estar acierto, ah, área de, una tienda donde venden, este, entonces ellos tienen que cambiar sus reglas, no pueden, no pueden mandar los billetes para que...
Sí, tiene que ver cualquier tipo de máquina, cualquier tipo de tienda.
Sí, entonces todo esto ellos tuvieron que el director investigar a ello, investigaran, este, algunos, algunas quejas que tuvieron por, ah, el otro negocio que estuvo allí, y aparte quiere que usted también, ah, tome el tiempo de tratar de buscar otra locación.
Okay.
Ah, y como ya metió la aplicación y todo aquí, es preferible que busque una locación dentro de los límites de la ciudad, sí, va a ser más, uh, bien más...
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Arroyo. That concludes the item three. Moving on to item number four, Planning Director Report. Mr. Staples.
Uh, thank you Chairman Orrin, I'll keep it brief. I believe at each of your stations, you've been given a note about a picture day. Uh, we've been updating photos for our current staff. We did that a week or two ago, um, so it's your turn. So, uh, keep in touch with, that's this Friday.
Yes.
And Darnell's, the personnel will be here to be in touch with if you're running late, if you're at nine, whatever it is, uh, please contact Darnell about when you'll be here to take the pictures.
And it is eight thirty, cause I thought I read seven thirty in the email?
It's, uh, it's eight thirty, he changed the time.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is it a photographer doing this?
Yes.
Okay.
And, uh, that's it for my director's report.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Staples. Moving to item five, uh, City Attorney Statements. Mr. Epperson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'll stay with him.
All right, uh, item six, Commissioner Comments?
I have none.
No, none for me?
I have none.
I have none.
I have one. Just because the state of California passes a general law for the entire state, doesn't mean that they have intimate knowledge of what goes on in our community, and we need to be mindful that we represent our community, and the state passes a law that is not in this community's best interest, I think it's obligatory that we resist their overburdening style of doing things. We, we still have autonomy here. I think we need to be mindful of that always. That's the end of my comments, uh, identifying a representative to the city council.